I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we please stand for a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 7:36 PM, the 28th day of January. I'd like to remind everybody that the table is mic'd so we'll pick up any small conversations going on. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. Siding officers Maria Valado, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Mr. John Neese, our Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Kenneth Copaz, our Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Dr. Gary Maida, Board Secretary, Mr. Daniel Castle's School Business Administrator, Mr. Tom Figueroa Jr., our Assistant School Business Administrator, Dr. Dennis Deggan, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Mitchell Pascal, our Board Counsel. The meeting's open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Broderick.
Present.
Trustee Burke.
Here.
Trustee Casillas.
Here.
Trustee Egan.
Here.
Trustee Finerty.
Here.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Here.
Vice President Munoz.
Here.
President Valado.
Here. For the record, adequate written notice of at least 48 hours giving the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was promptly posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Bayonne, Ms. Madeline Medina.
Thank you. At this time, I'd just like to make one short statement. On Friday, December 27th, Retired Social Studies and ELA Director Evelyn Teraskiewicz passed away after a long and valiant battle against cancer. Smart, bidingly funny, loyal, honest, hard-working Evelyn, or ET for those who worked with her, was a born leader and a force of nature who dedicated 47 years to the children of Bayonne. She'll be sorely missed. I'd just like to take a short moment of silence. At this time, I'd like to go out of order, and I'm going to start with our commendations. I guess we have too many of our young students here that have to go home and do their homework, so we'll get them out of there. So our first commendation is whereas a rare disease or disorder is one that affects a small number of patients, which in the United States is considered to be a population of fewer than 200,000 individuals, whereas as of the date of the adoption of this resolution, more than 7,000 rare diseases affect as many as 30 million people in the United States and their families, whereas children with rare diseases account for a significant portion of the population affected by a rare disease in the United States, whereas many rare diseases are serious and life-threatening and lack effective treatments, whereas people with rare diseases experience challenges that include difficulty in obtaining accurate diagnosis, limited treatment options, and difficulty finding physicians or treatment centers with expertise in a rare disease affecting the individual. Whereas Rare Disease Day is observed each year on the last day of February, whereas Rare Disease Day is a global event that was first observed in the United States on February 28th, 2009, and was observed in more than 90 countries in 2018, whereas Rare Disease Day is expected to be observed globally for years to come, providing hope and information for rare disease patients around the world. Therefore, be it resolved that this Board of Education designate Saturday, February 29th, 2020, as Rare Disease Day recognizes the importance of improving awareness and encouraging accurate and early diagnosis of rare diseases and disorders, and supports a national and global commitment to improving access to and developing new treatments, diagnostics, and cures for all rare diseases and disorders. And this is by the Committee of the Whole. Next up is whereas the Bayonne High School Marching Band has brought honor and distinction to Bayonne High School and the community by receiving second place in the state band competition and fourth place in the Nationals, whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize the outstanding achievements of the Bayonne High School Marching Band. Therefore, be it resolved that this Board of Education wishes its heartfelt congratulations to the Bayonne High School Marching Band.
Band, just so you know, I'm going to have that resolution framed for you with a nice eight-by-ten glossy of myself.[381.03][381.03](laughter) But congratulations, and you don't have to stay with us. Listen, it's an honor and a privilege to go to the games and see you guys, and I just want to say, you all are just fantastic, and I really enjoy, and we all enjoy, everybody in the room enjoys hearing your music, and keep up the good work, it's awesome, all right? So, thank you.[403.41][403.41](applause)
(inaudible)
research competition, whereas the following students earned medals and will advance to the 2020 Jersey City Medical Center Robert Wood Johnson STEM Showcase, whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize the outstanding achievements of the following students. Be it hereby resolved that this Board of Education congratulates the following students and wishes them luck at the Jersey City Medical Center Robert Wood Johnson STEM Showcase. For the gold medal, Nicholas Arezco Community School, A1 Facial Recognition and Text Generation. The students were Prikshar Ogwal, Benjamin Kulik, Nofor Tadros, and the advisor was Barbara Denabiktis. The silver medal, Philip G. Roome Community School, Social Media Affecting Your Confidence, Nalia Martinez, Avery Morales, and Malina Flores, and the advisor was Kim Semko. The bronze medal went to Nicholas Arezco Community School, Energy Harvesting, Harnessing Energy for Vibrational Motion, whereas Bianca Del Rosio and the other students were Maureen Hannah and Daniel Santos, the advisor was also Barbara Denabiktis. And then an honorable mention went to Washington Community School, Baby on Board, How Can Hot Card Deaths Be Prevented, and the students were Gabriella Henau, Carly Lynn, and Adrian Pardo, and the advisor was Rosa Bell, and this is by the Committee of the Whole.[621.16][621.16](applause)
All right? Go ahead, congratulations. Congratulations.
(inaudible)
Congratulations.
Look at the big chair.
Send the big chair.
Wait.
Wait a second.
Look at you.
These fans, these fancy, fancy.
Get the big chair.
Can you adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
They're probably wheeling around.
Did you adjourn our meeting? Please.
Good job, guys.
I'm not sitting down, I'll stand up.
We got one more?
We got two more.
Two more?
Should we just stand?
I'm just going to stand.
Do you just stand?
Okay, next one. Whereas to John Taylor from Bayonne High School, William O'Donnell from Bayonne High School, Treshaw Bentley from Henry E. Harris Community School, and Adam Brash from Hudson Catholic, spent time over the winter break helping the needs of the community, whereas these four young men took the time to spread holiday cheer citywide and bring recognition to their schools and their families. Be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools would like to acknowledge their community spirit and pride, and this is by the Committee of the Whole.[730.16][730.16](applause)
Congratulations. Come on, come on. Move, guys.
Hello. Thank you for bringing holiday joy.
Thank you. That was awesome. That was awesome. Good stuff. Congratulations. So proud of you guys. Do it again next year, right? Remember, 70 evergreens on the house again, all right? Next time I'll have hot chocolate.
One more?
One more. One more.
Okay, whereas Josephine Eschander, Joshua DuBois, Zuri Hines, Diana Mendoza, and Spencer Basil, Bayonne High School students and Mr. Wood's Social Studies course, Facing History and Ourselves, have been nominated for the 2020 Student Literacy Award by the Pracken International Literacy Foundation, whereas the literary achievements of Bayonne High School students, Josephine, Joshua, Zuri, Diana, and Spencer aid in the global fight for democracy, peace, equality of all races and cultures, and the suppression, eradication of fascism and anti-Semitism. Whereas the achievements of Bayonne High School students, Josephine, Joshua, Zuri, and Diana, and Spencer, have brought honor and distinction to our school community in the City of Bayonne, whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize the dedication and accomplishments. Be it hereby resolved that this Board of Education sincerely congratulate Josephine, Joshua, Zuri, Diana, and Spencer. Would you please come up?[811.31][811.31](applause)
Congratulations. Congratulations. Next year, right? Remember, 70 evergreens on the house again, all right? Next time I'll have hot chocolate.
One more?
One more. One more.
Okay, whereas Josephine Eschander, Joshua DuBois, Zuri Hines, Diana Mendoza, and Spencer Basil, Bayonne High School students and Mr. Wood's Social Studies course, Facing History and Ourselves, have been nominated for the 2020 Student Literacy Award by the Pracken International Literacy Foundation, whereas the literary achievements of Bayonne High School students, Josephine, Joshua, Zuri, Diana, and Spencer, aid in the global fight for democracy, peace, equality of all races and cultures, and the suppression, eradication of fascism and anti-Semitism. Whereas the achievements of Bayonne High School students, Josephine, Joshua, Zuri, and Diana, and Spencer, have brought honor and distinction to our school community in the City of Bayonne, whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize the dedication and accomplishments. Be it hereby resolved that this Board of Education sincerely congratulate Josephine, Joshua, Zuri, Diana, and Spencer. Would you please come up?[871.12][871.12](applause)
Congratulations. All right. Get the big chairs.
Guys, sit in the big chair. Congratulations. Good job.
All right, and you say adjourn. Adjourn. All right.
Okay, at this time, if any of our students, you do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to leave right now. I know you guys have homework to do, you have better things to do to be here. It's nice to see you, though. You're going to rest, you're going to stay, and you're going to stay. I'd like to turn to our regular meeting agenda.
Before you do, real quick, all of the board members, it's National Board, it's New Jersey's Board Recognition Month, and in the month of January, what we do is we celebrate what the Board does. It's a thankless job. Sometimes, you know, people get really upset, board members, but it is, and bottom line is, we're here for the children, and the Board of Education, while sometimes you agree, you don't agree, but that's how you make progress, right? You work through some challenges and some problems, and I just want to, on behalf of myself, no, on behalf of the central office, on behalf of the community, on behalf of the office that I hold as Superintendent, I just want to recognize the work that the Board of Education does, and it's not. It's a difficult job, and you work through a lot of things, and there's a passing of ideas, and you work it out, but, you know, nothing great is done without some hard work, determination, some sweat, some blood, some tears, some, some of that really does actually happen, but, you know, that's what we do, and I just want to recognize our Board of Education for all they've done and all they continue to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, so we have, we have our curriculum, instruction, and policy, Resolutions A1 to A26. Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Motion by Trustee Finerty. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
And a second by Trustee Wilbeck. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Egan?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Yes.
Vice President Munoz?
Yes.
President Valado?
Yes.
Next up is our Finance, Resolutions B1 to B13. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda, B1 through B13.
Great. Motion by Trustee Egan, and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And a second by Trustee Broderick. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Egan?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Yes.
Vice President Munoz?
Yes.
President Valado?
Yes.
Next up is our Finance, Resolutions B1 to B13. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda, B1 through B13.
Great. Motion by Trustee Egan, and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And a second by Trustee Broderick. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Egan?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Yes.
Vice President Munoz?
Yes.
President Valado?
Yes.
Next up is our Finance, Resolutions B1 to B13. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda, B1 through B13.
Great. Motion by Trustee Egan, and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And a second by Trustee Broderick. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Egan?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Yes.
Vice President Munoz?
Yes.
President Valado?
Yes.
Next up is our Finance, Resolutions B1 to B13. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda, B1 through B13.
Great. Motion by Trustee Egan, and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And a second by Trustee Broderick. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Egan?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Yes.
Vice President Munoz?
Yes.
President Valado?
Yes.
Next up is our Finance, Resolutions B1 to B13. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda, B1 through B13.
Great. Motion by Trustee Egan, and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And a second by Trustee Broderick. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Egan?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Yes.
Vice President Munoz?
Yes.
President Valado?
Yes.
Next up is our Finance, Resolutions B1 to B13. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda, B1 through B13.
Great. Motion by Trustee Egan, and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And a second by Trustee Broderick. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Egan?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Yes.
Vice President Munoz?
Yes.
President Valado?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution questions. Okay, Resolution B1, whereas pursuant to NJAC 6A23A3.1, in its contract with the Superintendent of Schools, the Bayonne Board of Education established quantitative and qualitative criteria, associated merit bonuses for the Superintendent for 2019-20 school year. Whereas the Board of Education has now reviewed indicators of achievements of those goals, therefore it is hereby resolved the 28th day of January 2000, I'm sorry, 2020, that the Bayonne Board of Education accept the merit goals as established and are hereby submitted to the Executive County Superintendent of Schools for approval as required by law per NJAC 6A23A-3.1. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
So second it.
So I have a motion and a second on that resolution. Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
I abstain.
Trustee Egan?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
I abstain.
Trustee Wilbeck?
I abstain.
Vice President Munoz?
Yes.
President Valado?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we do have questions from the audience. At this time, I'd like to ask our student representative, Francis LaBuddy. He's our Board of Education rep from Bayonne High School. Thank you, Francis.
Good afternoon, good evening, Board of Ed trustees, Superintendent Mr. Neese, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Copaz, and Dr. Deggan. My name is Francis LaBuddy, and as the Board of Ed representative for the student government, I hope to inform you on a number of events throughout the school the student government have hosted and participated in over the last month. In regards to some of the events we've organized in the past month, the student government have hosted a range of holiday season-themed events. Before the winter break, we had conducted our annual Holiday Grams event, which worked seamlessly through the extended homeroom. We had also conducted our annual Winter Fest event, which had a record-high turnout of 115 students, and we had made $500, which was donated to the Water Wells Project, which was donated to the, I'm sorry, to the Rotary Club of Bayonne. At the beginning of January, we decided that we would end our hot cocoa sales early due to a lack of interest from the student body. Currently, the student government is working on planning our Valentine's Day Holiday Grams. Students will have the ability to send school-appropriate message to their fellow peers and teachers for $1. In addition to the message itself, the card will come with a plastic rose. This event will run through February until Valentine's Day, where the student government will deliver the messages to the receiving students' homerooms. The next event that we will be working towards in correlation with the previous would be our annual Sweetheart Dance. In the preparation for this event, we will create cards for the Project Independent Kids, which they look forward to each year, and host a dance in the tech gym, where we will have coloring books, face painting, and more to entertain the students in attendance. Again, thank you for your continued support of the student government and your time today. Therefore, be it resolved that is the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, John J. Neese, that the below listed job descriptions be added. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education approve the recommendations made by the superintendent to use the following job descriptions. Communication officer, executive assistant to the superintendent, and teacher of baking and pastry arts. Now, Mr. D'Amico, you had a question on C-31. Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street.
73 West Sixth Street. Question I had was, with this job description, would that entail communications from the board as well? Or just strictly from central office?
District-wide, from everything. Yes, sir.
And then this is also something that could be absorbed by somebody who already has a job? It's not actually created a new job, it's just a new job description?
It's just a job description, that's all it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on Resolution C-31. Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Broderick.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Kasaius.
Yes.
Trustee Egan.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
No.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Vlado.
Yes.
Okay. That is it for the questions. Okay. Resolution D-1, whereas pursuant to NJAC 6A 23A 3.1. In its contract with the superintendent of schools, the Bayonne Board of Education established quantitative and qualitative criteria associated merit bonuses for the superintendent for 2019-20 school year. Whereas the Board of Education has now reviewed indicators of achievements of those goals, therefore it is hereby resolved the 28th day of January 2020 that the Bayonne Board of Education accept the merit goals as established and are hereby submitted to the executive county superintendent of schools for approval as required by law per NJAC 6A 23A-3.1. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
So seconded.
So I have a motion and a second on that resolution. Trustee Alonzo is absent. Trustee Broderick.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Kasaius.
I abstain.
Trustee Egan.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
I abstain.
Trustee Wilbeck.
I abstain.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Vlado.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we do have questions from the audience. At this time, I'd like to ask our student representative, Francis Labuti. He's our Board of Education rep from Bayonne High School. Thank you, Francis.
Good afternoon, good evening, Board of Ed trustees, superintendent Mr. Neese, assistant superintendent Mr. Copaz, and Dr. Deggan. My name is Francis Labuti, and as the Board of Ed representative for the student government, I hope to inform you on a number of events throughout the school the student government have hosted and participated in over the last month. In regards to some of the events we've organized in the past month, the student government have hosted a range of holiday season themed events. Before the winter break, we had conducted our annual holiday grams event, which worked seamlessly through the extended homeroom. We had also conducted our annual winter fest event, which had a record high turnout of 115 students, and we had made $500, which was donated to the Water Wells Project, which was donated to the, I'm sorry, to the Rotary Club of Bayonne. At the beginning of January, we decided that we would end our hot cocoa sales early due to a lack of interest from the student body. Currently, the student government is working on planning our Valentine's Day holiday grams. Students will have the ability to send school appropriate message to their fellow peers and teachers for $1. In addition to the message itself, the card will come with a plastic rose. This event will run through February until Valentine's Day, where the student government will deliver the messages to the receiving students' homerooms. The next event that we will be working towards in correlation with the previous would be our annual sweetheart dance. In the preparation for this event, we will create cards for the project independent kids, which they look forward to each year, and host a dance in the tech gym, where we will have coloring books, face painting, and more to entertain the students in attendance. Again, thank you for your continued support of the student government and your time today.
Next up, Melissa Godsky Rodriguez has an open question on open positions job description.
Hi, Melissa Godsky Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F. So first thing on the job description, I know we kind of covered it. I think it's great that we're expanding something that's so very much needed in today's time. And as quickly as we move throughout our day, think about it, we need somebody who's ready to act immediately. So thank you for thinking of that. And the second thing, so we mentioned open positions earlier. We have a lot of open positions in the district. I think I counted 81, if I'm correct, if that website is up to date, minus the volunteer position for the cheerleading coach. What are your thoughts, and what are we doing to stimulate applications into our district?
How are you?
Great, thank you.
Is the whole number of internal applications such as, like you said, a cheerleading coach, doesn't mean that we have 81 vacancies. It's just, we have to leave it up that it's available. If one school needs a cheerleading coach, there has to be an avenue for them to apply. So in no way do we have 81 vacancies. Again, most of them, we're just missing one school, that's why we leave it up. But when that person that we do find, they can apply.
So it's always like an open requisition?
That's correct. And then we'll wipe all of it clean, and then it'll start again when we do all of the internal and external for 2021 in March and April.
And then for the needs, like we specifically spoke about the English language teacher, like four of those open positions. Again, I think just how are we stimulating or recruiting? You know, why are we, why are they, why is it a problem? What is your opinion on why it is an issue?
I mean, if you look across the state, there's a teacher shortage. We do have a lot of leaves which are unfortunate. So we do use ESS for our absentee management, so we might have a qualified certified teacher in the room, but again, it would stay as a vacancy online. But we just hire the language arts teacher as you said tonight.
Got it, and then I'm going to get out of here. Is there a succession plan in place for teachers and others to look into growing within our district for these roles?
Stay down one more time, I'm sorry.
Is there a succession plan in place? So for example, if we have an open role, who do we have, who can fill it, who's interested in filling and understanding our teachers' aspirations? Is this something that I use in my daily work life? I just was wondering if it's something you've ever thought about?
Absolutely. So most of our teachers, I think out of 800, 400 have master's degree, which is unbelievable. Many of them also have several certificates. So they have K-6 plus a language arts, and you know, probably about 100 different certificates that the state has. So they will, at the end of the year, put in a request for a transfer. Or we do keep a database, so we do know, if we do have an opening, we will reach out to that person and say, listen, we have an opening in the business department. We know that you have spent years in the elementary teacher mathematics. Would you be interested now coming up with teaching in the business department? That happens every year.
Thank you very much for clarification.
You're welcome.
Melissa. I'd like to thank you so much for bringing to our attention Rare Disease Day. I know you've tried for a while for us to acknowledge this day, and I'm very happy that you have brought it to our attention, and I'm glad that we finally are able to acknowledge this day in our district.
I appreciate that. And we need lots of a lot of kids who don't fit in all these other buckets, you know, and I hate to say we all belong in a bucket, and it hopefully inspires a lot of those children listening to go into science and, you know, medicine, right? There's such a need for that, so I hope it's an inspiration for the community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Next up, Mr. Joseph Wyatt, 301 Maple Avenue, North Plainfield, New Jersey.
My name is Joe Wyatt, and I'm here for my three minutes per month, okay? I see that there are new members on the board, and when I talk, you may wonder what the hell I'm talking about. You just ask the board members here, and they'll be glad to fill you in. I've been working on the idea that we need not to discover truth, but discover what the lies we tell ourselves. And so I got this idea from watching the series Chernobyl on HBO. And I encourage everyone in this room to watch that video. And while you're watching it, change the word Chernobyl to Bayonne. Okay? And what is the cost of our lives, our lives? And in this school district, it's the lives of our children. We send them out in the world unprepared, and we do them a great disservice, okay? So, and there was a gentleman named Valerie Legasoff, who was the chief physicist that was trying to handle the disaster at Chernobyl. And he told the truth, and he got punished for it. He was basically erased as a person, okay, in the Soviet Union. And the closing statement of that, the closing dialogue of that video reads like this. "To be a scientist is to be naive. We fail to consider how few actually..." Oh, "We are so focused on our search for the truth, we fail to consider how few actually want us to find it. But it is always there, whether we see it or not, whether we choose to or not. The truth doesn't care about our needs or wants. It doesn't care about our governments, our ideologies, our religions. It will lie and wait for all time. Where I once..." And this at last is the gift of Chernobyl. "Where I once would fear the cost of truth, I now only ask, what is the cost of lies?" I also, so the last time, time before I was here, I asked, why am I the only, one of the only teachers that gets up and stands in front of the board? And I asked Mr. Broderick, and he replied that the rest of the faculty was following the chain of command. And I said, no, that's not what it is. It's because people are afraid. There's retribution, and that's what has to be erased. And then I came, the next, the last time I came, I talked about that the, it's a lie that we have a functioning chain of command. Okay, a chain of, what is it? The, the chain of command. And I thought people might think that I think that those, the people in the chain, in the chain of command are incompetent. I didn't mean that. What I meant was they're dysfunctional. And they're dysfunctional because they have to be that way. They were chosen.
Mr. Wyatt, I apologize.
Okay.
I know. We'll have to wait for next month to get the second part of the story, but your time is up. Okay. Next up, Mr. Charles Ryan, 123 West 30th Street. Don't know what the question is. Your handwriting is worse than mine.
First of all, I would like to thank you. Congratulations to Mr. Egan and Ms. Burke. Enjoy your time.
I'm sorry, Chuck, could you please speak into the microphone? I can't hear you.
Congratulations to Mr. Burke, to Ms. Burke and Mr. Egan on your time here. You're going to enjoy it. It's certainly anything but dull. It's certainly interesting. When I left, I asked if the superintendent would be checking with the PTO presidents so that we could possibly have board liaisons with the different school PTOs. So I was wondering, Mr. Neese, have you discussed this at all with any of the presidents of the Board of Education, of the PTOs, rather?
Actually, I met with one school last week, and I just communicated with all the PTO presidents. I sent them an email yesterday, two days ago.
Right on top of it. Love that. Okay. I also hoped that a safety and security committee would be put together, drawn from the members of the different committees and the president of the board.
Actually, March 4th, I believe it is. I don't know, I don't have the exact date, but we're meeting with the students and all our elected officials, the fire department, OEM, to discuss school safety and security.
And are board members going to be a part of that process?
Correct.
That's fantastic. I'm glad that we're on the same page here. This is done well. Marist High School. I hate to do this to you, Mr. Castles. What's the impact on our cap, on our budget? Does that automatically, does staffing of it, taking it over? I mean, it's in the papers now. I'm not asking if it's going to be done, but once we start staffing it, it's going to hit the budget? Is this going to force an election? Are we going to have to bond? How's that going to affect us?
There's no agreement in place at this point.
No, we don't. But if it were to happen, what would, how would that affect the citizens of this town?
Wait, I can't speculate on this.
Would it, would those costs fall under the cap law?
I can't speculate on something that hasn't happened.
It's a matter of fact, either they are under the cap law or they're not under the cap law. That probably, do you know or do you not know?
Mr. Vine, it's my understanding that the City of Bayonne is in contract talks with Marist to buy the property, not the Board of Education.
That's true.
So I think that a city council meeting would be more appropriate to address those issues.
But the City of Bayonne is not going to staff that place.
We don't know what we are. We haven't heard anything about it.
So no, okay, so nobody's thinking about it at this time. That's not so nice to know. We're doing the budget at this point in time. Would it be possible to have a list of priorities put out to the public? In those things that superintendent, that you think are important? We've heard all sorts of things even tonight, panic buttons, child study teams. The teachers have been pushing for chapter 78 relief. All of these things have an impact on a finite budget. Do you think maybe we could get a statement of what our priorities are and what water so people can understand what their money's being spent on?
Absolutely, we can come up with something.
Fantastic. Committees.
I can't hear you, Mr. Castles.
I said absolutely, we can give a statement of priorities.
Okay, and then last thing, committees. I know a lot of work is done in committee. I would hope that we could put on the website a list of the committees, the members of them, and the chairpeople who are involved in them so that the citizens can know how that process is working. So we hope that would happen. And 15 seconds over.
Not my clock, I'm sorry, you'll have to come back.
I said 15 seconds over. I'm cutting myself.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Gene Woods, 128 West 39th Street.
Did you get a list of priorities, actually? No?
No.
Just so the public knows, your microphone is live. And just so the public knows, it's always been the history with the president of the unions, he gets more than three minutes.
I don't think, I don't think I'll be more than...
If he needs.
Four.
Someone said one.
Three and a half.
3:45.
3:45?
Wait, that was 15 seconds. The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. The true neighbor will risk his position, his prestige, and even his life for the welfare of others. This comes out of Dr. King's book, Strength to Love. And why I started with that is because I have the opportunity tonight to speak with multiple hats. First, as a union president, because I'm here supporting my members. Second, as a teacher in the district. Third, as a straight Caucasian male, and then finally, being a human being. Thank you to the district for taking the initiative to go along with what Governor Murphy passed in 2019 to promote the LGBTQ+ curriculum. Over the summer, Dan Ward and I worked together with Lisa Koalik, trying to get some of that stuff going. It ties in perfectly, and I spoke with, there's Dr. Deggan back there. Dr. Deggan, two weeks ago, went to the Hudson County Consortium to speak about the importance of the Holocaust mandate, the Amistad mandate, and now our new mandate that's moving forward. So I think it's important that we do this. I know a lot of things have come out, you saw on social media. And one of the things that I stress, and I've had these conversations with different people, is that it's about talking about and sharing the contributions that members of the LGBTQ+ community have contributed to history and to society overall. And for years, I mean, you know, probably going back to Farah when you were on school, what was taught about African-American history obviously is not where we are today. Talking about the Holocaust, you know, there are polls across the country where people still don't know, and even across the world, people still don't know about the Holocaust and know very little. And there's a piece that I wrote that's going to be in the community news soon about why I feel the way that I do about this stuff, and what's the importance? Because, you know, when we look at the Holocaust, everybody wants to know that. You go to any bookstore, thousands of books, there's this fantasy about why. And why comes with the curriculum that we will be installing here. The why is, how could a neighbor turn on a neighbor? How could a neighbor kill another neighbor? How does this happen? And I go back to where we are when we look at the treatment of people of color, African-Americans, members again of the LGBTQ+ community. And when we say why, we have to look at how we're treating people now. And I look at it from that standpoint. We don't need to read about 75 years ago, because two, yeah, yesterday, yesterday's 75 years to the day in which Asher Burkinow was liberated. We don't have to look back that far. We just have to keep looking at how we're treating each other now. And if we keep going down that road, we will be in trouble as a world. And I said this to a couple people, we're talking about this. I don't want my son to have to read about a group that had been targeted and attacked and maybe wiped out 20 years from now. He's reading that. So I think we're doing a good job moving forward with this. I came out tonight to be with our members, because I'm going to speak a little bit about the importance of it. And I said, I appreciate everything you're doing. I think this is a great thing that Governor Murphy put forward, and I hope that we can find real ways to infuse it across the curriculum, just because we want people to know the importance of others' contributions. So, thank you.
Hey, Gene, before you sit, can I just ask you to make it public, please?
Sure.
I know every year, there's...
Oh, yes.
A Holocaust memorial at City Hall. Do you have a date set in this time?
So, yes. April 23rd this year, it's...
It's Shakespeare's birthday, by the way.
Say it.
It's Shakespeare's birthday, April 23rd.
So it's a couple of days before Yom HaShoah, but we're still holding it. It will be up at City Hall, will be 6:00 PM. I'm still working on some of the details. We have a really good guest speaker. It's going to be a little bit different this year. The person who will be speaking is a violinist, and she's a teacher. She taught at Rutgers University, and she uses a violin that was recovered from the Holocaust. So that's what she uses. So it's going to be a great program. Also, March 20th, every year, I think for the last seven or eight years or so, I've been doing a program here at the high school for all the seventh graders.
Sammy?
Yeah, so Sammy, Sammy will be there. Sammy has spoken to, you know, maybe, I forget, five, six years, about, you know, 4,800 students in total. Sammy's story is pretty powerful, so if anybody wants to come, I do about an hour talking to the seventh graders about the Holocaust, about human rights, you know, what we can do better.
And that's March 20th?
That's March, that's March 20th, yeah. So we'll be in the auditorium. I talk for about an hour, and then I turn it over to Sammy, and he shares his story. And then, you know, your granddaughter had a wonderful opportunity, you know, to meet with him. It's a great, it's a great experience, and I think we, you know, we need to keep this going.
He makes it real. Sammy makes it real. And if anybody has the opportunity on March 20th, even if you can get, Joe, if you can get somebody to cover your class, I don't know if you've been there, it's a wonderful, wonderful program that Sammy does. And the auditorium is packed, and kids leave, and they know it's real. They know it's real. The Holocaust is real. Sammy makes it real. And Gene, just publicly thank you for all that you do outside the realm of your job. It's amazing. And I don't mind telling people. I really don't mind. Gene, what's her relationship?
Mrs. Finerty was my teacher, senior year, senior English 12.
Thank you, thank you, Gene.
Thank you, trustee.
Our next speaker, Meg Calcaterra. You want to go? I'm sorry. How about we have Caitlin Patel. How about we have Caitlin Patel...
She's Leo.
Yes, there we go.
Is going to go first. 537 Park Avenue, Hoboken.
Yeah, do you want to hear?
I'll do, I'll take it.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Maida. Good evening. My name is Caitlin Patel, and for the past eight years, it has been my honor to serve the Bayonne Board of Education as an art therapist and arts educator, both at the grammar school and now at the high school level. My transition to Bayonne High School this year has allowed me to serve as co-advisor to the school's LGBTQ and Allies Club. The opportunity to be an ally and a mental health support to this extraordinary and deserving group of young people has been one of the highlights of my career. The strength and courage that they show each and every day is an inspiration, but this remarkable bravery cannot erase the harsh reality of the obstacles faced by this group nationwide. Decades of prejudice, dehumanization, and oppression have understandably eroded the mental health of many who identify as queer, in particular, the youngest members of the LGBTQ community. Young people who identify as LGBTQ are at an increased risk for bullying, abuse, sexual harassment, depression, and drug use, but perhaps most frightening are the statistics related to their increased risk for suicidal behavior. According to reports completed by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among young people aged 10 to 24. LGBTQ youth are over three times more likely to have contemplated suicide and almost five times more likely to have attempted suicide when compared to their heterosexual peers. These mental health disparities among LGBTQ youth can be traced to increased experiences of discrimination and rejection from their families, peers, and communities. Each episode of victimization, whether that be physical or verbal harassment or abuse, increases the likelihood of self-harming behavior by two and a half times on average. Words of bigotry and discrimination have become weaponized in our country of late. This kind of speech has been used repeatedly to justify the use of violence against any number of marginalized groups. For the LGBTQ community, the threat of physical violence has been an external reality for years. The mental health crisis faced by this group, most notably its youth, has turned that threat dangerously inward. Our hateful rhetoric has repercussions. Our silence, our inability to acknowledge the struggle and work towards creating positive change have repercussions. And for the LGBTQ community, particularly the young people that we are meant to serve and protect, those repercussions can quite literally be a matter of life or death. But we, as a community, have the power to change this narrative. The Trevor Project's National Survey on LGBTQ Youth Mental Health finds that increased support from others can serve as a protective factor, decreasing the negative mental health outcomes seen within this group. Recently, reports concluded that having at least one accepting and caring adult figure decreased the likelihood of suicide attempts for LGBTQ youth by 40%. This adult figure can be anyone in a young person's life, not just a close family member. We, as members of the school community, have the ability to serve as this support system, but we must make sweeping changes to our culture in order to foster this kind of growth. In a recent national study of middle and high school LGBTQ youth, more than 85% of participating students reported being victims of verbal harassment, 40% experienced physical harassment, and 19% had been physically assaulted inside of their school buildings, although students are often hesitant to disclose these kinds of abuses, making the numbers likely much higher. Nearly two-thirds reported feeling unsafe in school because of their sexual orientation or gender expression. This has to stop. The studies that surround the Fair Education Act in California, a law similar to the LGBTQ inclusive curriculum bill passed here in New Jersey, found that students of any sexual orientation who learned about a positive representation of LGBTQ people and issues in any class felt safer and more included in the school community. This curriculum is more than a series of history lessons. It has the power to change a school's climate. It has the power to change lives. I cannot stress this enough. Finally being seen, finally being represented, finally being treated with the dignity and respect this brave group of individuals deserve will go so far towards healing this community and the Bayonne community as a whole. I urge you, my beloved students urge you, to please move forward with thought and care as we work together to implement this historic and truly life-altering law. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next up is Meg Calcaterra, 27th Noah Avenue.
Yeah. I would like to open with a quote by the educational philosopher Stephen Camicia. "When voices and perspectives are excluded from curriculum, democratic education suffers." Good evening. Members of the board, Superintendent Nees, Assistant Superintendent Kopas, and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Deggman. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I would like to thank Mr. Woods and Ms. Patel for their wonderful speeches imploring you to support our new state legislation when it comes to an inclusive curriculum, when it comes to LGBTQ visibility. My name is Meg Calcaterra, and I am the co-advisor of the LGBTQ and Allies Group alongside Ms. Patel. This is my first year teaching at BHS, and I reinstated the LGBTQ and Allies Group because I saw that there was a need for it. I have four years of experience working with the LGBTQ community at Montclair State University. And while I was there, I worked with them in many different capacities. I was the president of the student-run LGBTQ and Allies Group known as Spectrums, and I was a facilitator for the LGBTQ center, which is run by the university. I am certified to teach safe space training, and I won the Pride Award from MSU in 2015 for my contributions to the LGBTQ community. With my several years of experience, I knew that I could use my skills and knowledge to help create an inclusive space for the LGBTQ youth and allies here at BHS. I had several students come to me in beginning of the year saying that they wanted to create a safer space for the BHS community. Unfortunately, like any other school, there are instances of bullying, particularly towards students who identify as LGBTQ. These matters have been in the past. However, my students, unfortunately, hear homophobic, transphobic language every day, whether that be in the hallways, in the bathrooms, and unfortunately, even in their classrooms by other students. And like what Ms. Patel said, this language can really cause harm to any child. When students use this language that can be seen blatantly or even slightly discriminatory, this can have negative repercussions on the students' views of themselves. Oftentimes, without students knowing, they can be using language known as microaggressions. An example could be a student saying they are comfortable with people who identify as LGBTQ, or saying that when you do identify as LGBTQ, it's a phase. These examples might seem different, but they have the same effect. This causes students to be afraid to come out, which causes negative effect on their self-esteem and mental health. As educators, we can combat this language by simply identifying when students are using these microaggressions. A broad example can be when students are using negative stereotypes by, about any particular group of people that are marginalized. We can use these instances as teachable moments and use them to help inform our students. By implementing an inclusive curriculum, we can help combat discriminatory views on people who identify as LGBTQ. While discussing the history of LGBTQ people, we can show students who might have never met someone who is LGBTQ that they are brave, courageous, and caring, and like most of us, they just want to make a difference. When a student implements curriculum that blurs the lines between race, gender, sexuality, socioeconomic status, and other oppressive structures that might hold people back, we are creating a democratic and intersectional education for our students. By intersectional, I mean how various forms of oppression, discrimination, domination, and other social processes intersect and influence each other. We are creating a window into a life experience that we might not have lived. As educators, we are here to blur these divisions and break down those barriers that might define us. As educators, we are here to do that, educate. And we are educating our students in the best way we can. We are here to teach them an abundance of knowledge and make them well-rounded citizens of our community, moreover, our country. As a community, we can help teach our students how to be more inclusive and to combat these biases within our own beliefs. When we teach students about LGBTQ people and their history, we are not just creating windows, but we are also creating mirrors for some students. Some of these LGBTQ students might have never met another person who identifies as LGBTQ. Now, they are able to see positive role models throughout history. By creating these windows and mirrors, we are helping students learn and to grow as people. When they leave our educational institutions, we want them to leave as the best possible versions of themselves. And by creating an inclusive education, we are doing just that. We hope that you will internalize all these, all of that we have expressed tonight, and we'd like to offer you our support and resources in the process. I'm happy to take any questions now or after the meeting, and feel, please feel free to contact us. And while you finalize the implementation for the plan for the 2021 school year, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Matthew Basil, 333 Avenue E. Is the board considering adding LGBTQ history and education into the curriculum?
Good evening, board. I want to thank all of you for coming and being here, allowing me to have a moment to express my question and my concerns. I want to thank the advisors, Scott Patel, and all the teachers in Bayonne High School. All do a fabulous job.
I'm sorry. Can you please speak into the microphone?
I certainly can.
Thank you.
This was brought to my attention, there was a concern about a petition that was online created by a student of a conservative group here in Bayonne High School about basically abolishing, from the way I understood it, any type of, any reference to any history of the LGBTQ community. We live in a, in a country that has a long unfortunate history of suppressing minorities, people of color. We had the civil rights movement in the late 50s and 60s that becomes, and of course, understandably, and most importantly, part of every curriculum in every public school in America. Our country is spotted with just deplorable things that we've done in our history. However, the absence of education and the suppression of education leads to even more ignorance, more separation, and more just hateful rhetoric that just serves just to divide us. If there's any consideration by the board, by any teacher, by any board-sponsored clubs, any kind of consideration to suppress or eliminate any type of education that would only help to bring us as a community, as a country, and as a world together, I think we should give a second thought to it. I have three children. My third child is graduating from Bayonne High School this year. I am proud to say that I am an ally of the LGBTQ community. I apologize for not getting, there's so many letters now. And I'm proud of that. I've marked my body with an ally symbol, just so I, I'm proud to tell people that I am an ally of all people that do have a suppressed voice still in this, in this day and age, in this country. We pride ourselves in moving forward, and I look at the faces of the board, and the genders, and it's diverse, and to exclude any group for any reason, as good as, or as bad as it can be in this country, it would be just, we'd be squashing just our ability to move forward as, as, as human beings. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's all I have for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Vice President Munoz, second by President Bolado. On that motion, it's... Trustee Alonso Zapsen, trustee Broderick.
Yes.
I was kidding. Trustee Gassias.
Yes.
Trustee Egan.
Yes.
Trustee Finney.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Bolado.
Yes.
It is 8:43. The board will not return.